...at four o'clock with Senator Ted Williams. Make sure you phone yourself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, go ahead, motion to adopt agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, the whole in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna hear a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have no questions, so I'll second.
Those in favor? Aye. Okay, yes speakers? I don't see any where you do have a thank you. In here from Christie Albertson.
Yeah.
For the summer food program.
And that was really well attended, most all of the summer, so.
I've heard that all summer, that it was a good program. Hope they can continue it next year.
And then everywhere you got your pack, the pack meeting. Dennis, in the agenda somewhere. Do you have any public comment?
Rick Bledsoe said he was gonna come and talk about something, but he's not here, so. He may later, but.
Well, we're moving on to department reports. Scott Utley's not here. Fire Dennis?
I have nothing further than what you have questions.
No?
Scott's here.
Oh, Scott's here.
Oh, there's Mr. Utley.
No, it is four o'clock.
You're up next.
Oh. All right. What would you like to know?
Your 911 report.
Oh. Anything I need to add to it? Folks?
That's what we're asking you.
You have it, don't you?
I know.
I turned it in. We had a kickoff today at eleven o'clock with our new telephone system. And we had contractors come in yesterday and put all of our K-Wing systems in, our CATs lives. So that's done, so now we're just getting with the, we did our kickoff this morning at eleven o'clock, just confirming the equipment that we're getting. And there's still quite a bit of more. We'll be meeting every other Tuesday until we get the, and we're thinking maybe, we're looking at November, December, if that doesn't work because of hunting season. And, you know, I'm not sure if Ryan has a elk tag or whatever, I just do not destroy his hunting season. So we may kickoff in January. So that's sort of where we're at there.
That's a pretty good investment, I don't know.
Yeah, it's right around two hundred and seventy, almost three hundred thousand dollar investment to answer telephone.
An OEM pays.
Yes, that comes out of the telephone tax. So, that's, and we will not be getting texting this go around. Texting and 911. They have some beta testing going on in Portland, Eugene, in that area, I think Ben has it, but for us right now, no.
So, any idea when that might happen?
Statewide? Maybe three or four years.
Really?
Well, there's just so much equipment that it takes, the hardware, to make this texting work. And they don't want to throw it in all the centers until they get all the books worked out of it. So, we can, at some very isolated 911 centers are doing a beta test.
Thank you.
That's it, unless you have any other questions?
Okay. Travis, I'll come back to you here in a minute, we'll go ahead and go with her. Christie?
Oh, it's Jill.
It's my dad?
Jill Harlan.
Come on, Jill. Okay.
Did you guys come in to speak?
I wasn't really coming to speak. I was coming actually, Francine Winters. I guess I can speak, can I just speak?
On those signs?
Well, she was kind of the lead in this, and we were kind of working on getting some signs in the parks and seeing if we could do no smoking in the parks. And I just didn't know where we were with that. And she didn't know if that was, anything had been decided, or if we needed to do a proposal or anything. So I thought I'd come, just to see.
I think, I don't know, we just need to order some signs to.
Oh, I thought you guys were getting the signs.
We are getting, we can get signs, we were kind of waiting. We were waiting to say it was okay to do, and so is it okay to order signs, or?
The assumption that it was already done.
Oh, yeah, so we're good to go.
Yeah.
I have a question.
So we can see yes, and we can order.
The what?
Ordinance on no smoking, so it's enforceable? And if so, that ordinance needs to be on the sign.
The number of the ordinance, yeah.
The Lakeview ordinance, because just like the little signs that say no dogs in the park, everybody brings dogs to the park.
That's true.
And until there's an ordinance where it's enforceable, right Travis, it has to have a town ordinance number to be enforceable.
We don't per se have an ordinance.
Yeah, Jeff didn't mention that, so.
We will make sure we follow and get that done. If it needs an ordinance or whatever, so we can give that.
And I'd be happy to help you.
Okay.
I can give you, get you examples of other ordinances and things, I'd be happy to do whatever.
Great.
Okay.
And did you write your number on that list, your phone number?
Yeah, you want my email too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay Travis?
Nothing to add unless you have any question?
Okay. Have a good road, you all.
Yeah, glad it's over.
So how's it going with the twenty-four hour coverage, is that working out okay?
So far, we just had our first week, so, yep, so far it's doing well. We're not seeing any calls in the morning when we're coming in. That's mostly what we're looking for, is to prevent the thefts and stuff to happen at night. So far it's working well.
Okay, good public works, Jeff.
You know, you probably noticed I didn't get a report in. I had a pretty hectic last week and fair and stuff, but our water usage is down about fifteen percent. Highest used month of the year so far. Contractors are trying to wrap it up down on South Ninth Street. Hopefully this week they'll be paving the last of those cuts, that's pretty hopeful, but I'll probably do it actually a little bit on the paving. We had some breakdowns on a sewer lift station, repair in the house. We sent all of our tests off for disinfection byproducts as per Oregon Health Authority. Still waiting for that, results from that, but I'm sure there's no, never been any elevated levels in the past, so it'll probably be the same this time, so once every three years, Jeff. Shut down our irrigation system on the school property. Got our hay off that. Pretty disappointed with their hay crop, but you know, it wasn't for lack of water. It's just a tough piece of ground. They're wanting to look at other options, they wanna maybe, I would hate to see them disc the whole thing up and put a new crop in there. It would be very expensive, and I don't know, I'd rather see them probably cross drill that, maybe with VET or something. I don't know, they're doing this sort of study on that, see what they think can be done to get more production. Wait while it's out of hay. So we're gonna wait to hear back from Christie Reese on that, and then we'll maybe have to discuss it amongst ourselves. We've been painting the crosswalks, we got the school zones all painted up before school started, and we're working on the uptown now. About it?
Okay. Daryl's not here, Roberto?
I did attend the kickoff meeting with Scott this morning. In the emergency services building. Last night I went to the Lake County, or Lakeview Community Partnership Meeting, and they had had a tour, I mean, I went on that last week with the Derek Herbert building. Trying to see what can be done with that, and get it on the dangerous building, possibly. So there was some people from that organization that kind of led that tour and were shooting.
Well, it's just about, trying to get a committee together to, you know, work on some possible solutions for the Herbert building, just to, should be a community asset, it is certainly something that we all recognize as an icon building in our community, so. Most that haven't been through it don't know what it was, and those, do you remember? You remember the good old days of how it was? You know, served a lot of different purposes, so. Certainly, as it became, you know, was formed and brought together, then there'll be more information on how it was, and start with it. Trying to work on, you know, planning the program moving forward to utilize that building once again. More than just the ground floor that is occupied at this point. Scott, second and third floor and the basement, but you know, always not seeing anything.
Been on two tours of it in the past, and it's also neat things in there that could be. So it sounds like we're gonna have a standing committee, so if anybody wants to volunteer for that.
So in the contact right now, it would be definitely Ginger and Castor.
Right. But, you know, see what it needs and see if we can get it on that list. You know, funding is coming a little over some time, a little help. And then, I've been working through it a little bit on the J Street interchange. We looked at, Jeff and I looked at that again this morning with the engineer, and kind of have some different ideas on what to do with that. So we're still following up with that. And also, Jeff and I met with Daryl on, there's been some drainage issues behind the new gardens, the garden running into the property there on Birch. A lot of people have gotten kind of stoned on that, and that was a planning issue that was addressed during planning, so Daryl has kind of tentatively designed something to maybe keep that away from the fences that are there. And then I've just been on kind of a limited work right now, so I haven't got too much done, but we, I am working on two franchises right now with the attorney. Two that are interested in coming. That would be two more, so. Hopefully, and then at our next meeting, I want to have that lodging tax ordinance here, so that we can adopt that. Have you had a chance to talk to the motel? No, but I talked to Jeff a little bit, and so we've kind of decided, because most stuff owners are not here. So we're gonna send sort of a letter, we should go out tomorrow, so that. With a copy, a print media draft that we're doing. Just so they find out. At least a letter that we'll send. At least give some heads up, that's what I thought, you know, instead of just rush in and lieside them, you know. They have to make changes in their bookkeeping. But yeah, so those should go out tomorrow. We had interviews two weeks ago for finance, and so hopefully that's coming together. We're being pushed in on board, we'll get it straight. So I think that covers that.
Was that when you hired somebody? And accepted it, starting actually.
Very exciting.
So that definitely means that, given we had with the company, I think there are pros and cons to work out, at least for this time.
No, because number one, they never have call to follow it up, you know. And we, they have to still call, and it's like, you know, we have to call you every day on the utility side, what's it gonna be like to take the finance side over for council? You know, pero, I mean, they're not responsive.
Well, I think in the future, you know, that technology's gonna improve, and certainly the customer service will improve, and it sounds like a fine company, but just there was so many unknowns. Plus, in a small town like this, and, you know, the distance between us all, and I just, I like the fact that we have somebody on the ground, but that way that across train, we've got people to back each other up. Now, losing that person would have been, you know, leave us shorthanded at times when people take vacation or something, so. You know, obviously having a person on the ground often comes at a greater cost, but it's still a greater benefit to the community, because that money recirculates here instead of just being sent out.
They're loading here, and I put money down on them.
I think the cost of that system, plus having to hire a part-time person here, may have been more expensive than just getting our own person here, who I think will be very good, hopefully.
So Mary announced who that is, who took the job, or?
I mean, it is Shelley.
Shelley.
B-A-D-E.
B-A-T-B-Y.
And they are gonna open up a bicycle shop. Some carriage, and they repair bikes, and you wanna fund the building?
Repair bikes and do tours.
And tours.
And that, that bike skiing, or you know, snow bike type thing, and all sorts of other bikes, and they're very excited to move there. They didn't want to move here for a year or so. I think she's had quite a bit of experience and energy.
Is there gonna be a little bit of overlap, so that we can give it a cross train?
I mean, they'll be able to enhance it, because Amy will be here, and then she volunteered to come in on Mondays and Tuesdays mornings for a while, and so, you know, get the transition, so I think that's.
Looks like you don't want to take a big shot, don't you, don't you? Good for you.
Okay. Any old business? I have none. New business? We've got the Bowles Canyon Public Protection Structures Inspection Summary. I was reading through this. We're semi alright for now, but eventually we're gonna have to do some work on that damn.
So, oh, you guys didn't mention how high it got this year, I mean, just.
You know.
Didn't get up that high, as I recall.
They said that this is the first time it showed signs of water going out that top drain on it.
Yeah, it was something that I didn't record.
But I would guess that was partially due to the bottom gets plugged, you know, when you get a high flow situation like that. These lower ones, we can go clean it up, I think it got plugged off at some point.
Okay. We have the air quality and advanced program plan update. First, must've missed that in the packet.
And then there will be a meeting coming up on that, well, that's number H, but that'll be on the twenty-sixth, that. You put that kind of thing.
So do you have a full committee for that now?
I think so. There was several people at the last committee, and, well, I wasn't here, but there was a lot of people, several people that attended.
There's always room for more, Sammy, if you want to be a part of it. Pardon me? There's always room for more, if you want to be a part of it.
I don't know if that necessarily.
I was just saying.
You're just curious if it's open, I mean, it's intended, yeah. So, and Rachel's sitting out this afternoon, Rachel's sitting out, yeah, just asking for comments on the final draft, and then while they join me in the document, it sounds like, for the commissioners and council, so. Good plan to something, you know, just, and the committee just meant to see how we're doing on, working on our strategies, and sure that we're staying the program, and fall through is what we've said we're gonna do, so.
And there is, Don found out today, we first heard there was no more money, and then there, there is about five thousand dollars possibly right now for a wood stove. If they notice today that we have one, maybe.
If they can get it for under that cost.
So there is a possibility.
I did give them the list, or a late, a late evening today that was a single mom with two kids. So I did pass that along to them, so. Otherwise, there's a waiting list. We have nothing available right now.
A waiting list meaning, are we gonna get more money, or just waiting list in case we may possibly get more money?
We may get money, but there's four people, and if one backs out or opts out and doesn't, isn't, doesn't comply with what they want done, then they'll pick somebody that's off the waiting list.
Okay.
Okay. Matter of removing and adding signatures, US Federal Bank Resolution, new signature card? And the other must be nine eleven. All right. Because we have two resolutions here. Okay. Now, who had the town like, who has a bank account with US? Needs to add Sandra Winslow as a signer, and remove Tim Harris from the account. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I have, move the full resolution nine eleven, and a removing and adding signatures, that's right.
I'll second.
Who in favor? Aye. Okay. One from Carrie's for nine eleven. Donation request from Nostalgia Start, use soccer. Have we done this before in the past?
Well, I don't know for sure about the use soccer one, you guys might know if we donated. And, you know, most of the time we do a pass or something, you know, swim pass, but right now that's, you know, they need the money, or, you know, so I, I think that we would be able to like donate a hundred dollars. It's up to you.
Well, I've got a vote at all, it's like we're getting lots of kids involved in it.
Are you involved with that, as far as, how many kids are you?
I'm coaching the.
That's why you have to go.
I just love my other son. I only have two kids, that's the issue, but there's probably a hundred. Maybe more, I don't know, it makes a lot of kids.
Yeah, they have been close to registering early, though.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, a lot of, a lot of teams got ad right last minute trying to find that show, which isn't, it's a good program as well, right, I mean, you know. I have mixed feelings about us donating to things, but.
I do too, about sporting things, especially because there's so many of them, and other people might think that they.
Well, one of the things that we talked about, and we talked about it also at the end of the swim team, or swim season, was kind of establish those guidelines like at the beginning of the year, this is who, how much we have, or we'll donate, whatever, and then it's cut off. Because I think we gave out more swim pool passes than we would have. I mean.
But yeah, we were a lot better when we were in the past, but.
So I think that's something maybe when we set our goals in the general, you know, we really look at that.
Yeah, the report said a hundred and sixty-eight players actually went to the show.
And that's a lot of kids.
No, it's, I always wonder where the funds go on the board, and I don't, we're getting recorded, and I know a lot of people get upset, like I think against this stuff, but because I'm absolutely not in for it, but the fees usually pay for themselves, and in this case at soccer, where there is some equipment, not a whole lot, and kids putting on balls, and and feel it's something, I don't think they're in the room, or the school has to pay for any watering, or the lawns, or anything like that. It's been a while since I've been on the board for soccer, so I don't know how they're doing financially, but I know for years where they were doing great, so. I don't know, I really seek to then continue to ask people for money on this, but. So every board does, every board does.
So what, what's your recommendation then?
Well, I say we table it from now, I'd like the other two members to help, but, I mean, I think that maybe with all of these, that we ought to just put a cap on each of the programs, like a hundred bucks thing. Because, you know, I, I will say that I have asked for like the wrestling board, but that was a sponsorship with advertisement, a banner going, you know, on the wrestling mats, you know, kind of thing, at the table. I'm not sure what advertising we get shown, you know, sponsoring, that's the only banners up at the soccer field. Just to show that we're actually being supportive, I guess, and publish in the paper maybe, or who cares, you know, so. It's just, we're just throwing money out there, I mean, a cap, and then, you know. I think I don't find if that was money, just like most of the other programs, I don't, I don't know, last year I didn't ask for the wrestling, I don't think that will again. That first year when the board was first going to start, I asked for a hundred bucks, and I won't in the future ask for money, the wrestling board is doing it, I don't know if it's hard to, so.
I agree that we should table it.
Table it?
If they come back, maybe.
We meet again in two weeks, and then let's just, I, I will try to follow, follow, so just.
Okay. Four fifty-seven, the government plan? Deferred Comp?
In our meeting contracts, it says we offer a deferred comp program. Did you ever get one, Dennis?
I've got a contract, I haven't fully looked through it, but.
Before deferred contract for comp?
Right.
Okay. But a lot of the employees have never even been offered it, and there's a new one that, I, I've checked into several of them. And the one that is before you, the person that monitors it, she works alongside of hers. Because within hers, you have the Organ Savings Plan. And they just let you pick out whatever you want, and then you see she wants to hear. And this, when she monitors it, to make sure if you're in a bad, you know, maybe shouldn't put it in that fund, or should put it in that fund. And, in my opinion, that's a better plan than Organ Savings Plan. So I would like to offer that to our employees, anybody that wants to do that. So they would still have a choice of one or the other. They don't right now, they could, yeah, because who's yours through, Dennis?
I'm not sure who it's through right now, with you Scott, you don't? Or what? Recurring comp? Provider.
You don't have it?
I was thinking it was more of a, whoever wanted to participate in it, their choice on.
Yeah, oh, it is, yeah, it is.
I mean, it wasn't a particular program that I was aware of. It just, we got the ability where we could get into one of those that we chose to do. I never did, and I don't know anybody that's, you know. Jeff might have.
Ultimately, it's just a pass through for the town.
It is.
The town's not, all my employees are the employees.
No, it's just entirely up to the employees.
But you're just providing information on another plan.
Well, it's, it's like a savings thing, you know.
It is.
It's not.
But it's pre-taxed.
It's pre-taxed.
It takes a little bit of the keeping time.
Only thing the town would be involved in is just a little bit of the bookkeeping.
Yeah.
Because I actually, it was in the Organ Savings thing, although it's many years ago, but definitely it's paid off my age.
You do offer it to anyone?
We'll offer it, or whichever plan you want, but I just think it's important in the annual, and the contract it says that we offer it to the employees, and I don't think any of our employees are about it.
Never saw it.
Or, well, like Dennis, but you've been here for a while, so. That was long.
I remember, you know, when they were going through the process, trying to add it to the, to the contract, but I don't remember that, I remember the pre-tax, like you could pre-tax your, your medical and all that.
Well, there was a medical one that was a little different than Organ Savings, so.
So we will offer one, and it doesn't have to be that, it's just something that I think.
Yeah, I think the employees, if they want to do it, they should look at it and decide if that's what they want.
And if they start out when they're young, I mean, that's amazing how much you can invest. So, and then you can use it as a loan if you have to, later on.
Does, would the town have to be the ones that monitor the loan? Kind of in the same fashion that the hospital does down there, like their retirement.
If they borrow.
One key, they borrow, but there's somebody down at the hospital.
Hospital has to make sure that they follow, yeah. So. Hospital has to make sure that they follow, yeah. So.
Kind of off subject a little bit, but kind of on that, I heard today Stan was telling me that on sick leave no more, there's no more conversion for, at purrs for.
I had not heard that.
Outside tier one.
Really? I had not heard that, but I'm with you on that. I had not heard that. Cause used to be that you got one half of your sick that was in a bank.
That was my understanding too.
I'll follow up on that.
I assumed he was speaking to you because you prefer her. Maybe he talked to somebody within purrs.
Well, they just had that meeting. He may have attended the meeting out of the prison.
Out of the prison, yeah.
They, they had a retirement meeting. The gal, the Togo Berdinos came down and I know Matt was there. I think Terry was there. Stan might have been there.
Anybody outside of the tier one.
Can't.
You know, it's, they don't, or they're qualified for that.
Cause that really helps in your retirement if you have a big bank of sick time, you know.
Yeah.
But I'll follow up. I didn't, I'll check with Mickey.
Which could be a hardship on town if they decide, well, I'm just gonna use my sick leave up. Well, you know, that's kind of what I was thinking and stuff, but, you know, if you've got buku hours and you're one of those departments where you don't have a cap on your sick leave, like some agencies have, it really makes a difference. But, you know, five or six hundred hours in there is not really gonna be a whole lot that you're gonna see on the alley.
I'll check.
Sorry to get offline.
It's good.
Well, that's right.
Anybody got their O C bulletin? I'd like to, I'd like to show you real quick, but you go back and always read again. Uh, let's move on to, on the 19th of September, 10:00 AM, County Commissioners Meeting on Annexation. And this Joint Air Quality Meeting, is that the same day or what day is that?
The Joint Air Quality Meeting is 3:00 PM on, uh, the 26th, Tuesday, the 26th. And the County Commissioners Meeting for the Annexation Request is September 19th.
What did that say? No, I mean, okay, something else here.
So on September 19th at 10.
Right.
Is the one for the annexations.
Right.
And, and then on, um, the air quality one, that's the 26th.
6th at 3:00 PM?
3:00 PM, sorry, 3:00.
Women's?
It'll be here. Yeah, then it'll be.
6:00. And don't we have a council meeting on the 26th?
Yes, at 4:00.
It won't take very long.
So. And those were the annexations that we talked about that Daryl and Jeff Edmond were here, the council had a work session on, huh?
Yeah. Uh, next one, as well as resolution 912, a matter of approving change order number two and number three for dog lake construction. And send your completion date. That'll be three more days.
I know, and we'll have to have another extension, but that was the one we put in for this time. Because they haven't started on the sewer projects and more stations at all. So we had discussions on that this morning with Daryl, um, you know, because they're supposed to start on right away. There's still finishing up the, you know, the ninth street project and, yeah, it's been kind of a nightmare.
Not good.
Yeah, so.
I believe the sewer project is supposed to be completed by the end of September. And they'll be lucky to get started by the end of September.
Right.
Then they're gonna start getting into the heavier flow time of year where, if it's such a go, after that, when the flows come up, they're not gonna be in that way.
But you put a fine thing in there so if they're not completed by that, they get fined per day.
Well, there is a penalty phase.
So long. Well, was there something that actually held them up or?
You know, I, I put that same question to Daryl and he keeps, uh, saying he's gonna get back to an answer. And I met with Scott this afternoon to see if he had everything to begin. And he said it didn't look like they had enough parts to start the project.
Right. And then we just had this $19,000 one that they didn't have or, you know, planning for all of that in that project. And there were several meters that were not identified or the lines that were not identified. And then we'd have to go back and propose it. So. So we're gonna be a little bit more closer on those clients. And Jeff and I are gonna be a little closer.
The, the $19,000 was pretty unavoidable.
So, oh, that was that fire?
That was the fire line that went over to the door factory. So we just, you know, stuff that was done in the forties, nobody knew. We couldn't just cease offering that service to them, the fire line service. So we had backup and correct the situation.
You know, it's, it's not quite so bad expending the time it is expending the money. Choices are limited sometimes.
Any other motion on that?
Well, can we get a real good report on this before the next meeting? And I'm not sure if we need to, you know, all these kind of change orders and stuff. And, you know, it's pretty clear upon just asking for additional dates, but I think we need to be more aware of where we're at with the budget on all this. Because, you know, I don't want to get caught unawares of what's going on. So.
We may want to make sure that Daryl's gonna be here.
Yeah, make sure you give it Daryl and Jeff and then give us a real good, and, and Vinny's being executive because we might be in a situation, so we have.
Well, and like Jeff said, you know, a lot of that goes to that one where it was underground. They didn't know it was there and they cut down the fire line. You know, so that's the majority of that. So, yes, I'll make sure that I've done that. We'll just hold up and not table that till the next meeting.
I mean, you're tabling this?
No, I don't mean to do that.
Oh, okay. Just to better report it.
I'm really approve resolution number 912 on the matter of approving change orders number two and number three for dog lake construction.
Number seven?
Seven.
Who's in favor?
I.
Hi. Any more concerns? Uh, we're working here. There's a thank you and an invitation for Friday, September 15th for ribbon cutting at the new Head Start building. I think somewhere, I said number three, I think it was. Okay, the, the only thing I have is I'm still, I'm working on the map for the ATVs. I'm putting in the, where all the gas stations and motels are and stuff. And then once I get that done, we'll make copies and we'll all sit down and figure out what crossings we want. And also map out some of the roads so they'll have, some people will have an idea which way to go to get to certain areas. Apparently, um, Alberta and Stock Drive has been opened up by the county, from what I was told. So I was gonna double check that tomorrow when I go over there. And that's all I have. The council having them?
Um, well, I have not been assigned to any committees yet. So the council may need to consume that at some point.
I would take the, the one that's in that too.
Secondly, I, I will be gone definitely for the next meeting and probably the one after that. Um, I won't be back here until like October 12th, so. Get you those tomorrow. I get you those liaisons around your, well, council has to vote on them.
Oh, okay.
The mayor appoints a, they're just.
No, no, the mayor appoints committees, the council appoints liaison. Check the charter.
People have to pull up.
Put that for next council meeting.
You know, all the liaison decisions and?
Yeah.
Can you talk to all of our departments? Liaison over.
No. Things like path and all this other shit.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Attorney Martin, we want to close the meeting at, uh, 4:40.